Follow the meeting to order. Continue the open session, anything to report out?
Turn that on. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz. Councilmember Malsen.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Hewer.
Here.
Please join me in a silent prayer and the flag, followed by the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/ U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 11th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approval additions or deletions? Seeing none, presentations, new employee introduction. Tom, Thomas Castelli, wastewater system operator, Randy Rocha, water system operator. Can you mark?
We're going, mayor and council. We have two new employees that started in utilities and who's up first? It looks like Tom Castelli's up first. He's from Galt, went to high school here, spent a lot of time here. Loves motorcycles, loves Galt apparently. He worked, he's worked with us for about six months in the part-time, as part-time with Public Works Maintenance facilities and he's been out mostly at the wastewater and the water plants, learning all of our systems. And now he's, he's coming on as a, or as a full-time operator in training to become our next great operator for the city of Galt. And if you have a few comments, Tom, you can, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. I am happy to be here, meeting a bunch of friends along the way. This is by far the best place I've ever worked. So as far as that end of things, you guys got it handled pretty good over there. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks, Tom. You forgot to mention he also has really good supervisors. Next one is another Galt native, Randy Rocha. He's, he's lived in and out of Galt for a lot of years, grew up here mostly, kind of lives now in Out Grove, so he's kind of on the outside, but we're making him come in, you know, come into work here. He's been, he's been learning water treatment for a while, he became certified. He's been looking to come and work for small cities like us and so we're bringing him on as a operator for the water system. He, he says he binges Netflix, I have no idea what that means. But I hope I didn't say anything that will be bleeped out. And he says he gets to see his mom every day for lunch.
Yes.
That is terrific. There you go, Randy.
Yeah, I'm just excited to be here for the opportunity. I'm from Galt, born and raised, so for me to come back here has meaning, so I'm just excited.
Welcome, Randy.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Public Safety Committee Annual Report. Lieutenant.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. This is our annual report of the Public Safety Committee. Our Public Safety Committee is chaired by Councilmember Lamson, vice chaired by Councilmember Malsen. We also have community members Lialaghi, James Conick, Sean Farmer, Randy Shelton, and Richard Tellier. All members that were a part of our program during this year met on each and every one of our agendized meeting dates from July 24, September 25, November 27, January 22, March 26, and May 21. That's important because in years past, we haven't had to hold all meetings on each of our dates that are prescribed, which is the fourth Monday of each month, because sometimes we didn't have enough business to discuss, but this group has been very robust in their discussions and bringing items forward to the committee to discuss, and most of those are related to traffic, pedestrian safety, and maintenance issues. We've had some discussion about homelessness. I know this council will get a presentation from the police department at the next meeting on that topic, along with other items that have been addressed by staff like speed limit reductions, our speed surveys, our streetlight audit by our CAPS program, and other activities that have occurred during the year. I would be remiss if I didn't give you a brief summary for the public to know that the purpose and function of the Public Safety Committee is to act as an advisory committee to you, the city council, and evaluate any public safety issues within the community brought to the committee's attention by city council, city staff, residents, and/or make recommendations to the city council. And I believe shortly, in the month of September, you will have some items come before you related to traffic safety downtown. So with that, I submit this year's annual report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, Day in the Life, video presentation, Police Department. There we go.
Mayor and members of council, you know, here at the Police Department, if you've watched for the last couple of years, even...
We're gonna hear when we're...
Here at the Police Department, we've spent a lot of time the last few years really trying to reach out to the community, especially our youth, and find better wa, new ways to, to work with our youth. And then secondarily, you know, in this social media world, we've been spending a great deal of time trying to really outreach to our community, to the members at large, and to the greater Sacramento area through social media. So, there was an idea that came up, it's called Day in the Life, and all I wanted to really do is just, really just showcase what our police officers are doing daily. And so, I got together with the other management staff and, and we wanted to find those that would be interested in doing it, and so we are very, very fortunate to have Max Dodge, and as a member of our department, I'm gonna introduce him in a second. But with this idea, you know, trying to get together with the youth, we wanted to, you know, find somebody that had the talent that we were looking for, and, you know, I have Trevor Mention right here, and he is a 17-year-old high school student here in Galt, and if you ever see him during events, he's riding around on a skateboard and videotaping things, and the quality of the work that he does is second to none, regardless of what his age is. It's professional, it is well done, and so, but for the, so I reached out and talked to his father, and then I talked to him and asked him if he would like to partner with us, and he jumped at the opportunity. So I'm gonna give the two of them a chance. This video that keeps self-starting, can't add the, what we, what we did is I asked, we asked Trevor, in the sake of time, to give us a three-minute teaser, because what is going to be aired on about 5 o'clock on Friday afternoon, this Friday, is a 22-minute Day in the Life video. And I like to say that it's like an episode of Cops, only it's not, because we're not allowed to copyright Cops, so it's called Day in the Life, and it really does an amazing job of showcasing and following Officer Dodge in around for one Saturday night. Everything that we filmed is in one Saturday night. So with that, I'm gonna go sit down, I'm gonna let these two fine gentlemen talk right now, and then we'll play the video.
When you say it's gonna be aired on Friday, oh.
Okay, so I should have said that. Friday, we have, we have our own Galt PD YouTube page, but what we're gonna do is, it's gonna be placed on the YouTube, but then it'll be on our Facebook, our Twitter, our Instagram, and our Nextdoor apps. It's going to be sent out to the public on that day with the link, and all they have to do is click on that and it'll go right to our YouTube page. So, the reason why I had to do this, 22-minute video is way too long to be placed on, like, Facebook, it won't, it won't take that long of a video, so, but we're very, very excited. It's our first opportunity, any future ones that we do will not be 22 minutes long. We're gonna do segments, it'll be a quick five minutes, three to five-minute videos each, with the same introduction that we, the same intro that we have up here on this video. So, anyway, with that, I'm gonna turn it over. So, we're gonna talk to our, our star right here, and then we're gonna talk to our amazing producer next.
First off, I just wanna say thank you to the chief and lieutenants and every member of the department who has supported me through this, but I'll give a special thanks to Trevor. He did amazing job here, amazing job with all the other videos, and I'm really excited watching him go through this process, and really looking forward to his future creating videos for the city of Galt, and pop, we talked a lot, possibly his career field. This is a little out of my comfort zone, but I decided to go out there and try it, so hopefully it's, everyone likes it. Give it to Trevor. Hello, I'm Trevor, and I just wanna thank Chief and Officer Dodge for this great opportunity I had to get, get out there in the field and experience the thrill of it, and I think it's a great way for the public to see what happens behind the scenes. You know, growing up, that was like my big curiosity, what is it to be a Day in the Life of a cop and experience that, and so I had an amazing time shooting this. And I, I just wanna thank Officer Dodge again, the way he presented himself to the public, and also to the suspects that he apprehended, he remained, you know, calm, and just, you know, seeing him out there doing what he does and what he loves to do really kind of inspires me to, you know, continue on this process. So, without further to do, I think we should watch a video, the three-minute version.
It's a teaser, remember, this is just a teaser, the actual video is about 22 minutes long, so.
I'm Officer Dodge, and just give you a quick tour of the Galt Police Department. Through here is our briefing room. So before and after a shift, we'll come in here and just sergeant update us about what happened throughout the day, and what, if any citizens have special complaints, something going on, we'll go there and try to help them out and address it. This is where we see most of our, we contacted graveyard, contacted day shift, like, just catch up with them every now and then, and then also they pretty much tell us what they did for the night, so we know, we know what they did, so we kind of help out best we can. I was born local around here in Stockton and Lowdi area. The reason why I got into police force, I always knew that I wanted to have a career helping people or working in, helping with the public. Someone called in that somebody's hopped the fence to the high school, and they're behind the gym right now, so. It could be anything, we don't, we're gonna go there, try to figure out what, why they're hopping the fence, it could be they're trying to break into the school and steal something, and then if, if we do think it is some sort of burglary or someone did break in, we'll try to get a K-9 unit there, and maybe we'll try to get a helicopter over.
227 from 229. Are you with the subject that matches the description?
What's your car over there? Look at this vehicle and see if he hasn't hidden any hiding places anywhere. This is what I saw earlier. So he had a little marijuana in there, none, just, just the remnants here and there right now. So he went over there, apparently confronted this guy who was on campus. Didn't specifically see him at the box, but saw him in the area of the box. They had words, he got confrontational and jumped. He called us. Did I just go by my car? Yep, and that was the video, and I just wanna add, there's a bunch of jump cuts, 'cause this is a three-minute version compared to the 22, so if you're just wondering why there's a bunch of cuts, that's why, so.
Well, what I wanted to say is, is that we, we only wanted to tease them, we didn't want them to see all of that, what happened. You wanna find out what happened with that case with about three other ones that Officer Dodge and the stops that he made, you'll have to watch the whole video on Friday. So, in the end, that guy was arrested, so, and he went to jail. But amazing job, and for the record, Officer Dodge hasn't even seen the three-minute, let alone the 22-minute version, so he was, he was watching more intently than anybody else, so. But we're really, really pleased, thank you both, incredible job, and as you can see, the rest of the, a lot of the department's back here too, because they haven't seen it yet either. It's gonna be new to everybody on Friday, so.
So Friday after 5:00 p.m., YouTube.
And where are the autograph session gonna be?
Well, and we didn't wanna, we, actually, what was interesting is, is that we had a great deal of discussion about doing it tonight, but we decided to wait till Friday, because tonight is gonna be all about National Night Out, so if we did it on, tonight, it would be lost in the social media world, so we'll wait until Friday.
Okay. Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Any public comment? Okay, moving on. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees?
Oh, yeah. Been a busy couple of weeks. We had a really luau, red and blue volleyball game, CSD and the PD. Our guys came in second. Only two teams. And Coffee with a Cop, great event. Citizens Homeless Commission will be getting a presentation along with the police, presentation, what, next meeting? Okay, alright. And in the Harold days, I never miss it, in fact, I wore a tee-shirt from 2006. Ice cream sorcery at the, at the Ray House, and the big one, the Safety Committee meeting. The Safety Committee recommended to the city council that we bring back a suggestion I made on creating a stop sign policy. Kind of a standard procedure, right now, we do a great job with staff, but it's not written down. So this would be an opportunity for the citizens, if they request a stop sign, it would be a, a standard procedure that would give them an answer of whether it's warranted, not warranted, where it's at in the, in the process. A lot of cities have done it, so I'd like to see if we can get that on a future council meeting, if that's agreeable. Do we need a motion, or can I just?
At the end of the meeting, the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, okay, alright, don't let me forget. And finally, in case anybody doesn't already know, I'm basically retired, so, from my day job. That's all I got, it's, thank you.
Mark?
Actually, most of my committees were buys this month, so I have nothing as far as committees, but as you said, Coffee with a Cop was a great event. Just came back from vacation over on the east side of the, of the nation, and believe you me, these fires are having a severe effect, just in California, Nevada, Utah, Arizona, everybody's getting hit by the smoke.
Yes.
I do have one thing I'd like to put out there, we have one of our local businesses who is making runs with everything from toiletries to food, water, whatever's needed, he's taking donations down at the...
Old Time Diner.
Thank you, the Old Time Diner, right, and so if anybody can help out with that, please do so. They need all the help we can give them.
Okay. Kurt?
My schedule here recently has been extremely busy, and I haven't had the time to make my STA meeting, so Mark is the alternate, will be taking over as the representative on STA.
Paige?
That's it.
Okay. We had our Safety Committee meeting, and one of the things with the presentation that just came out was the Safety Committee's main purpose is to advise council, and they also brought up putting, and I asked you guys all to drive down on Fourth Street a while ago, just crosswalk warning signs, and thank you, Public Works, for putting in speed limit signs down there, we appreciate that. So on a future agenda, we'd like staff to present the crosswalk signs in the, in the, in front of bars, what did I say, Barsetti's, no, Brewster's and Barsetti's, maybe on B and Fourth and D and E? Was it D and E, Mark? Yeah, I think so. So, we want you guys to consider that, which is one of the purposes of the Safety Committee. And then we have the Balloon Festival coming up, apparently they've sold lots of tickets, and Shop Local meeting I went to, we had a cleanup day, and the chief came, chief came to the beautification meeting, and we were trying to figure out where we're gonna clean up next, and McFarland Street was brought to our attention, and we didn't, the beautification committee doesn't have to do that, because chief got some people out there to get that done for us, so thank you so much.
So Jean and I met with Bill Spalding, he's the new superintendent of the high school district, so we caught him up to date on projected growth, and some of the projects in the, in the works. I attended Library Authority, we finalized negotiations, entered into the contract with the library employees, finished the contract for that. Attended Sip and Snack at the MAC, it was, I guess it was their most successful ever. Anyway, otherwise, there was something I was just thinking of, it'll come back to me, okay. Now, this morning, Jean and I met with John Costa from PG&E regarding, and actually, this af, if you get it, this afternoon, after we met with him, we received an email from the League of Cities regarding, what's the word he used, inverse?
It was inverse condemnation on, I guess, the electrical power lines.
So if everybody will take the time to read that, read that, League is asking for a, is asking for an opinion on it, PG&E and disagrees with the League's opinion, disagrees with the League's recommendation, so it was kind of interesting, because I had never heard of reversed condemnation, and then that afternoon, right after we met with them, we get this whole thing from the League, so if you'll read that email.
Is this property owners claiming inverse because they have power lines across their property?
Because I guess if there's a fire caused by, by a downed power line, PG&E can be held liable for that, for that fire, and they're wanting to, there's some legislation to reverse that.
I see.
To make, to make the, to make them not liable, if they're fol, if they're keeping their, keeping trees cut back and doing all the things that they need to do, that they wouldn't be, so.
The problem I have there is with the PUC, they don't allow them to trim trees in certain cases, and that leads to hazardous conditions.
So it is just, if everybody will read it, it was kind of interesting, and then that we received it.
Okay. Moving on, information consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Okay, Treasurer's Office, treasurer report for the period ending June 2018.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have a video to show you here this evening. That was, that video was, was pretty awesome, I, I can't wait for the 22-minute version. It truly did look, it was professional, truly looked like the cops show. I mean, I know you can't use that, okay? But anyway, that, before you, you have the Treasurer's Report for June 2018. This is the one meeting in the year where I can come back and say, here's how much interest we earned for the last fiscal year, and the fiscal year 1718, we did earn $621,333.07 in interest. In comparison, the previous fiscal year, we were just slightly above $400,000. So, yes, there was a $200,000 gain, but you also gotta remember, in this past fiscal year, interest rates went up, okay? So I didn't become a better treasurer in the last year, it's just interest rates went up. To give you a couple of samples, LAIF, as of the end of June, was at an interest rate of 1.85. Well, again, the previous fiscal year, they're more like .9, so it, it went up approximately 1%, our CD that matured, that was at Farmers and Merchants Bank in May, it matured on May the 12th, we were earning .95, because at the time, when we took out the CD, that was above the going rate. Well, so that .95 is now at 2.25, okay? So, it, through, you know, negotiation and interest rates rising, that's, that's what happens. Our weighted average interest rate ending month of June was, was 1.90%. So, as interest rates go up, for us as a city, that's good, because we invest that money. As individuals, if we're going out to buy a new house or refinance our house, that's not good, because then we have a higher interest rate that we have to pay. So it's a, it's a double-edged sword. In, in our local bank, we have, right now, approximately $8,720,000, so we do invest locally, wherever we can. And with that, I'll ask that the council approve the Treasurer's Report as of June 2018.
I've got one quick comment, the priorities for the investments that you do for the city are safety, liquidity, and interest.
That is correct.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yep. The safety, liquidity, yield, absolutely. And, and that has never changed.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Campion, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh.
Aye.
Thank, thank you.
I totally blew that one. Councilmember Lamson. Mayor Hewer.
Aye.
It's an only-assured meeting, too.
Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Communication?
I have none.
Communication? City Clerks' Report, League of California Cities Conference, designation of voting delegate.
Right, every year, the League of California Cities holds their annual conference, this year it's September 12th through the 14th. At the annual conference is their annual business meeting, the city council is allowed to designate a voting delegate. Their annual business meeting will have two resolutions they're considering, which is included, brief summary and the agenda report. At this time, city council can select, I have two members going, Mayor Hewer, Councilmember Lamson, if they so desire, and also give direction on either one of the resolutions included in the packet. What does council's desire?
I was on the League Resolution Committee one year, and it's, it's fun.
So Lori, would you like to be the designee? I figured you'd wanna be the designee.
I'm fine with that, I'm staying till Saturday, so I'm okay with that, 'cause it is late on Friday, but...
Yeah, so am I. It's fine, you can do it.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I move that Laura Hewer be the League of California Cities Designee, is that what you want?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Do we have any input regarding the resolutions?
Reading both of them, I think, my personal opinion is we should be voting yes on both. They, both of them benefit this, this community.
Both of them, yes, both of them are to ask the League to look at, see if we can strengthen our local control, which the state keeps... which the state keeps wanting to take away from us. So I agree with Mark, absolutely.
Along those lines, do we, do they, are they asking for letters of support as well?
I didn't see that.
Don't think so. This is just voting, they've, they've got a number of letters, I think, to get the resolution on the, on the committee meeting already.
Okay. I agree.
Okay, that's fine. So, we don't need to vote on that, do we? That's just direction?
The consensus, I think, would be fine.
Comments by staff? Anything else? Sean? Mark?
No.
Question. Chris, did, do you hear if the board approved the HCP or is the hearing still going?
I was going to give you an update on that. So if Mark doesn't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
The South.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan is being presented to the Sac County Board tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay.
And the way it's being presented is the county board can act on it. I think staff was thinking it would be continued and approved at the next following meeting, but it is a special meeting. And this is, you know, it is getting really close to the finish line. Planning Commission for GALT recommended approval for it in June. The Sacramento County Planning Commission recommended approval. It will then go, after Sacramento County Board hears it, it will go to Rancho Cordova for approval. And I'm expecting it to come before you in October for approval.
Sorry about that, Mark.
Okay, back to Mark. Do you have anything, Mark?
Thank you. Breaking news, smud, just before the meeting started, smud let us know that they were going to have a scheduled power outage within several blocks around Lincoln and C Street tonight between 10:00 and 3:00. So if any of our citizens can hear this and get it out, it just happened a few minutes before I.
Wow.
Came here, so.
Do they send notices out to the, to homeowners or people living in the area?
I do not know their policy, but they let us know, Public Works.
They do have a phone tree. Sometimes it works.
Sometimes.
Should we post that?
Most of the time not.
Not so late breaking news. I'm still painting the town.
Painting it green, okay.
It, it will, it will last for another few days, probably early in the next week, but we should be done and out of the way of school before it starts on the 16th next Thursday. So we're getting really close completing it.
Why are they putting up all these paths?
Excuse me?
Why are they putting up all these bike paths?
Would you like to ma, if, if you want to ask a question or you have a public comment, I can make arrangements for that. We don't. Okay, so let's finish and then I'll, I'll allow you to have a public comment, okay?
Thank you.
You want to go ahead and come up now?
Yes, please.
And if you'll say your name for the record?
Rebecca Myers.
Okay.
What is going up with all these bike paths everywhere? I heard it's $6 million to put these in and they're really making a lot of emphasis on them. Not to mention, you're riding right next to the cars on the streets. And that can't be safe because the cars to pull in, just park, they can just cut right in front of you and stuff. So I, I just don't, I, I, I just don't think, like, they made them, there's an emphasis for us to use them. They didn't pay all that money for, because there's nobody riding on them right now. But I think that they made them so that they, we would use them. And even says in these pamphlets how they make an emphasis on getting people out of their cars and on the bus, buses, bicycles, you know? Walking, I, I mean, that's going to be a hoot with a frigging older age person trying to ride a cycle out there in a, in 110, in 103 degrees heat in a three degrees, in a three-level smog alert, you know? You're going to have cardiac arrests all over the place. Not to mention kids and parents and stuff trying to get places with you. What if you have a, a baby, a one-year-old and a two-year-old? You know, I just don't think that a lot of these transportation plans are going to work for the average citizens. And I've talked to a lot of citizens and they also said that, that, that no, this doesn't work for them. And so I just don't understand, like, they put them up, they didn't even ask anybody in this city what, what they wanted for their transportation plans. Because it seems like everybody's happy driving around in cars, you know? And I don't think that anybody has any plans in changing that. So I just think it's a lot of money to put out that could have spent in other areas. We have a lot of people who are homeless. What are we doing for them? You know, we should be put, doing rehabilitation, trying to get these people back on the streets, not descending them and chasing them out of everywhere because everybody is somebody's baby and created in somebody's, they had a plan. You didn't have children so that they could be treated like trash, I'm sure, you know? So I'm just thinking that we need to think more about that, think about what we're planning on money, our money for, and if the people really actually want these things, you know? Because what, in my consistence, in, in my consensus, I have determined that no, that people aren't wanting these things. So it would just be good if, if we could have, you know, just more dialogue, you know, and, and stuff like that. And maybe we can get some, some kind of voting or consensus going or, or something like that. So, you know, whatever your thoughts are. I think I'm, I'm, I'm done for now.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Just to clarify though, the $6 million wasn't spent on the bike lanes, it was spent on the whole road project, the whole road project. So just so you're aware, it wasn't $6 million just for that.
I'm not sure it's going to be expensive to put all these big paths everywhere.
Okay, so, Chris?
Oh, nothing further, thank you.
And I am going to, I'll call you tomorrow morning, but I'm going to try to attend tomorrow night?
Okay. I plan on being.
Chief?
My only couple of comments. We've been working closely with both school districts on school safety initiatives. Most of my staff been working on it directly with their staff. We had a big meeting with the elementary school district with all of their principals and, and management there at the police department last week. And I also met the new superintendent for the high school district also. So great dialogue about wa, making sure that the schools are safe. On the day of school, we will have an employee or an officer in, at every single school in the city on the very first day. So that's taking place also. And then finally, national night out is tonight, my favorite night of the year. And so all of you that are going to be there, the briefing starts sharply at 5:30 at the police department. We need to start it right at 5:30 because we have to be at our first site at 6 o'clock, so.
Okay. Cora, I'm sorry, I kind of moved on. Cora, Armando?
I just wanted to notify council that the sprinklers have been installed at SP Park. So Mark, if you have any more green paint, you can just paint the grass there until we can get it green for you guys. And that's, that was just a big project that came through that a lot of the citizens had made comments on. And I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that by the end of this month, it should be green and ready to go again.
It's a really drought tolerant grass, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a native grass. It, it's made to, to go hybrid during the summer and it'll come back green soon as water hits it.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't be seeing it.
It's not sod where we killed it or have to add more seed to it, it'll just come right back.
Low maintenance.
Yes.
Great. Jean?
There.
Ashley?
I don't have any updates, thank you.
Okay. Kurt, anything else?
Nope.
Paige?
So like I said, the Safety Committee voted, to bring that to you guys, if you want to put it on the agenda. And also, back to the League, should I be the alternative since I'm going to, just in case? You get food poisoning or something, I never know.
That's, okay. That's fine, that's fine. Tom?
Don't let me forget. Stop sign policy.
Stop sign policy?
Yeah, if we could bring that back, get a staff report on it and see if we want to do anything with it. A lot of cities do have stop sign policies for stop sign requests. It goes through the whole process, whether it's warranted, everything. You know, whether it's a condition of approval, subdivision map or whatever. And the neat thing about it is we're already doing a lot of that stuff, but it's tribal knowledge. So this kind of forms it up into a policy. And, I mean, staff gets to write it.
And Mayor, Mayor and Council, if I, if I may, on that, both those topics. The Public Safety Committee is an advisory committee. They made two recommendations or voted on two recommendations to move that on the council. So it's, you know, reported out at council level. In order for staff, you know, for me to give direction to do some work on that, I'd like consensus of the council to, you know, proceed and move forward to, you know, put a staff report together and bring that back to the council. The two items were the stop sign policy. That is a, you know, something that we already do. Mr. Clarkson receives a lot of stop sign requests. We have a process that we go through. A policy would formalize, you know, our process, you know, like a standard operating procedure for staff. The other item, which was apparently discussed several times at the Public Safety Meeting, was, I guess, yield signs or stop signs at the intersection.
Pedestrians.
On Fourth Street, staff.
Pedestrian warning signs out there.
Pedestrian warning signs, thank you. Staff made a recommendation against, you know, that recommendation. But the, the Public Safety Committee wanted to move that forward with a recommendation to council to have staff, you know, bring that, you know, basically do a staff report and analyze that and bring that back to council for discussion. Before I move forward to do any work, I'd, I'd like direction from the council.
Did staff do a report previously for the committee?
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Clarkson because I was not at all of the committee meetings. I think it was discussed three times. I was just at the last one.
Well, we kind of did an informal report. We did traffic, a traffic survey out there, a speed survey, and then did some pedestrian surveys out there and then just brought, brought those results to the traffic committee.
And I guess it wasn't warranted is what your, is what the staff's thinking was?
Correct.
And my concern with it is if we, actually if council, I guess it's in council's lap now, decides to do that, if we set some policy for the future on, on, you know, precedent for other pedestrian crossings. Because you can drive around in those blocks and I can count probably six, eight, 10 that are in the same, exactly the same situation. So, you know, so, I mean, that, that's my concern is we do something like that, do we start putting on, you know, open the door to unwarranted.
Exactly.
Pedestrian crossings all over and what, what the exposure to the city is when we do something like that. So that, that would have to be part of the, part of the staff report.
So they were thinking because it is a high use area during special events, right in front of Velvet Grill, just a little, hey, there's a crosswalk here because it's brick and it's not painted, so sometimes you don't see it and it's at a T.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm coming from. If you can, if you can somehow justify it with the warrants or everything else where it doesn't set a precedent for all over the place, then it's one of the options I.
Well, I think it's, it sounds to me something like, I understand the policy coming back to us and let's looking at the policy. I personally, I mean, it's not, staff decide, I mean, that's a staff recommendation regarding where signage should be. It's council's job to do policy. So if we start now getting into deciding where signage should be on every street or, you know, somebody wants a stop sign in front of their house or somebody wants, I think we need a laid out policy. So I would absolutely agree with Tom. That's to direct staff to bring us back a policy regarding placement and so that we follow that policy. And if that, if this, if Fourth Street falls into that policy, then so be it. If it falls outside of that policy, then, you know, that staff have a procedure and policy that they follow and that we don't start deciding where stop signs go and where stop signs don't go because staff does have a po, a procedure that they follow regarding that.
Well, the pedestrian signs are the, are the.
So there were two issues. The committee voted to bring it to council.
Yeah.
So we're asking you guys if you want, if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah.
That's their jobs to advise.
Because there, there may be, there may, you know, we may, as a council, be able to have some findings to make that situation special enough to warrant it. But, you know, we ought to do it formally through a staff report and get all the facts.
I guess what I'd like to see first is us to bring forward the policy so that we're aware of what the policy is before we bring forward an issue, making a decision regarding pedestrian signs, that we first bring forward, that staff bring forward a staff report regarding the policy. So that we understand the procedure that's being followed and why staff make that recommendation.
But we're not asking for a stop sign. So this, so there's two issues.
Two issues.
Stop sign and then.
Stop sign policy and then the, the pedestrian signs.
They took two votes.
Hometown.
But doesn't that, doesn't, okay, so you.
It's two separate items.
Okay. So Mark, do you have a policy reg, I mean, do you have a procedure you follow regarding any signage? I mean, is there, I mean, maybe included in that staff report is regarding maybe vehicle signage or street signage?
We did not present that to the traffic committee as far as the, a policy. We do not have a policy in place for the, for putting up signs, you know, warning signs and such like that. We follow engineering, you know, MUT, MUT CD and other standards to, to determine if things are needed or not, if there's special consideration. But we don't have a formal policy. We went through that several times. I had myself and, and two other people went through it too, on this particular one. But, but, you know, policy could be written up on, on general signs, safety signs.
Would having a written policy like that save you time, save staff, staff time? I mean, I, I don't know how often you get requests similar to this, but if you're going through having to do a calculation or research on every one of them, it would seem that maybe a policy could help you. I don't know.
I, I think the policy could work both ways. It could help on some ends, but on other times, you know, in a policy you generally will have. And if you don't like the answer here, you can go here, you know, type of thing. So, so it, it may or may not, you know? I, I don't see anything against a policy, you know? I mean, it's, it puts every, in a playing field so we aren't setting precedents and we can't say, well, it works here or it accepts a policy here, so we can do it over here too. You know, I mean, it acts as a positive for, for traffic flow and stuff, so.
And lawyers probably like it that way, don't they?
Ask legal counsel then.
Do we have a consensus? Do we want to bring back, do we want staff to bring back a policy regarding safety signage or what?
I think it was stop sign procedures is what the terminology was at the, at the Public Safety Meeting.
Yeah, as, as Commissioner Mawson said, or Councilmember Mawson said that there's two items. One is a stop sign policy and the other is, is the safety pedestrian, or we'll just say safety signage, general safety signage.
Second. I'm unclear on the direction. So you're moving for what?
I think we're just putting on the agenda to, that's what we're asking.
What I have so far is a safety signage policy and also a stop sign policy.
No.
No.
Stop sign policy and then they're requesting crosswalk signs on Fourth Street. That's what the Safety Committee is suggesting. Crosswalk signs right in front of Velvet Grill and Barsetti's.
So we're talking about a staff report evaluating.
Right.
The safety signage, okay.
Okay, so we're request, so the, so the motion, we're unclear. So the motion is to bring back a stop sign policy and a.
Staff report.
A staff report evaluating the safety signage at the particular location.
Yeah, we make a motion that's.
Please drive down Fourth Street and go check it out.
I think it'd be a consensus just to have staff bring it back. I don't think we can put, make it as a motion. Is that not correct?
Doesn't need.
We're giving direction.
Well, to the extent the motion is giving further direction, I think it's okay. You're not actually really taking an action on the item. But if you want for a clear consensus to take a motion on what the direction is, I think that's okay.
Okay. So we can make it real clear and do two motions. One motion would be for the stop sign policy, which.
Okay, do we have consensus regarding placing on the item for the stop sign policy?
Yes, okay.
We have consensus, okay. We have consensus regarding the item of.
Crosswalk.
It's safety signage on Fourth and D Street.
Do we want that brought back as a policy, as a staff report or do we want it?
Staff report.
Staff report?
Yes.
I would consensus with a staff report regarding the safety signage.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Clear as mud.
Meeting adjourned.
No, no, no.
What? What? Oh, Mark's turn.
He took all the time.
Paige took it.
Blame me, blame me.
No, actually, actually, I'm going to go back to what you mentioned before, the wildlife preparedness and response. The way I read this, this is kind of time sensitive, and they're asking for letters of opposition from the city. This is one of those kind of sticky areas where it wasn't on the agenda, but if we have a consensus, can we not have our city manager pen such a letter and have the mayor sign it?
For, back to our attorney on that one, I haven't reviewed, you know, what the league has sent, so I don't know.
Basically, in general, they're asking for, let's see, city letters urging no change to the standards of inverse condemnation to the conferency rosters and copy to your legislature. So basically what they're asking is to send a letter out saying, ah, we don't want this. And point in fact is, the first meeting that they're meeting is today, the second one's actually on Thursday, so it's kind of extremely time sensitive.
So what are, I don't know what your question is.
It's just a letter of, they're asking for letters of opposition from the individual cities regarding this, this item. It's got to go before the legislature anyway, but they just want to know where the city's standing.
Can the council give staff direction to write a letter in opposition of whatever, I don't know if it's a assembly bill or-
It's, right now, it's sitting in the assembly, and you've got assembly members and senators both on this, on the subcommittee.
I'm, I feel like it's a little bit like taking action on, on writing a letter of opposition that's not on the agenda.
I think we actually have, even though the league made it sound very, why don't we bring it back, bring the letter back to the next meeting?
I would feel more comfortable that way. I don't-
You know, directing staff to bring back a letter in opposition for, for review at the next meeting. Staff and council have ch, a chance to have reviewed the legislation, to have reviewed what, what the league's recommending. I, I think even though they're having the two meetings this week, even talking to Mr. Costa from PG&E, it sounded as if they had, there is some time.[1725.98]